I'd like to call the May 16th Meeting of the Middletown Board of Education to order. Mr. Pierre, could you please lead us in the flag salute and if you could, remain standing for two moments of silence?
(Inaudible)
The first moment of silence this evening is for Sylvia Quillis, mother of Yvonne Quillis. And Yvonne, of course, is a registration specialist at Truman Moon. She's been in the district a good, long time, a very respected employee. Sylvia, a very, very caring person. She loved to cook and she prepared meals not only for the family, but for many of the neighbors and many of the children in the section. Her saying is, "You must cook with love or the food won't taste good." And Sylvia Quillis was also involved in numerous community activities. The next moment of silence is for Marjorie Veraldi. And Mrs. Veraldi worked for almost thirty years as a library clerk at Carter, then was mechanic's town and Twin Towers. I worked with Marge for a long time and I found her to be a very, very hard worker, not a clock watcher. She was not only respected by the teachers, but she was also respected by the students. She had a very, very calm disposition and students loved her for that. Marge was also active in a number of community activities, including those involving St. Joseph's Church. Finally, please, we will not be back until after Memorial Day. Please remember all the brave men and women who gave their lives for our country. Without them, we would not be here this evening. So please, remember the veterans, the people who gave their lives, Mrs. Quillis and Mrs. Veraldi, and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much. Mr. Crescenzo, could you lead us in the mission statement? Thank you.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Crescenzo. Mrs. Clark, could you please call the roll? And I want to thank you for your efforts and the job you've done in the board election and the budget vote. And while we're at it, I want to thank all the people in the district who supported the budget and who got out to vote. So, Mrs. Clark, nice job. Could you call the roll? Thank you.
Here?
Here.
Here.
Motion to approve the regular minutes?
Second.
Public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we come to recognitions. Okay. Approve of the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we did approve the regular minutes. I don't think we have to do that again. And you might notice someone else before we go on at the table, and that is, will be our newest board member, starting July 1st, John Lassoneira. Nice job, John. Thank you. And I also want to thank Mr. Melendez, although he did not win, he was very well-prepared in the forum, and we thank him for that and thank him for participating. Now I think we can come to recognitions, announcements, and community reports. And we have some very special recognitions this evening. We have one young gentleman who has, is designing, redesigning, a vehicle for the Middletown Police Department, and I'm going to turn the program over to make the introductions to Mr. Connell, who is the STEM coordinator and administrator in Middletown High School. Mr. Connell, you want to come up to the microphone? Tracy Sorrentino, also principal, thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Well, the idea is that, before I even start, I called her up with me because she was the one that actually came up with the idea and pitched the whole thing. So I just wanted to make sure that she...
Really?
Yes.
Really?
I think so.
Okay, good. Good luck with that, buddy.
Wait a second. I've got to videotape that because it's a comedy duo.
Us? Yes, we are. Good evening, President Perino, Mr. Delmore, members of the board. Norville took a little poetic license. We are very fortunate to have an amazing partnership with the City of Middletown Police Department. We work hand-in-hand each and every day. They have been amazingly supportive of everything we do, both in the moment of need, and also we're working toward a very proactive relationship, opportunities for our students to partner with the police to demonstrate how we are one community, one school together. So I actually was approached by Middletown Police, quickly knew that we definitely had a place in our school for this project. And I'm very pleased to say that Mr. Connell does never, ever, never, ever disappoint. And he put a team together to accomplish this task. But I will allow him to explain his project.
So, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity. It's always great because we've been partnering with the police department, not just to, not just as, not just to allow students to shine, but to really build relationships with the community. And we call it as one force, one strong force, New York's finest, I mean, Middletown's finest along with the brightest. And I didn't coin that phrase, actually that phrase came from Mr. Luis Escobar. Mr. Luis Escobar is actually one of our seniors, amazing student who took on this project. And he led it with such grace and passion. He has an interest in law enforcement, so when he saw this project, he really took it on. He owned it. He made it his own. So I'm going to invite Mr. Escobar and Mrs. Maraglia to come up to the microphone, because they both are actually who led this project and did an amazing job. So please welcome Mrs. Maraglia and Mr. Escobar.
All right. Thank you. Hi, everyone. This is Maraglia. Obviously, this is Luis. He's going to start off by just explaining his thoughts. He made a quick PowerPoint presentation, so please wait to the end for any questions, and then I will elaborate a little bit as well.
So the information of the project, the vehicle is an AM General M25 Humvee, which stands for High Mobility Multipurpose Wheel Vehicle. As of the current status, it is the final design. My final, well, my vision is, the vehicle will represent not only the finest, but the brightest that our schools have to offer, as this district provides numerous opportunities for those to pursue their dreams at their high school. The purpose will be used for parades, events like Night Out Against Crime, and can be used in police functions if needed. The completion date would be early to mid-June. This is the image, well, final. You can see the teddy bear with the text reflective of the police, shield on the fenders. In the rear, it would have the mural as well as police on the hood, and it would have blue, it would have blue striping as well as white. This would be the mural, obviously, it's mixed. But we have police and the school, whether it represents sports, ROTC, as well as academics, where the graduate has received their diploma, the key moment in their life. The slogans is Middletown's finest and brightest side by side, as well as where education and protection meet. Any questions?
Very precise.
Just a comment on my part. I think, want to compliment you for doing this and being proactive here, and I want to compliment your instructors and Mr. Connell, and also the Middletown Police Department. We have members of the Middletown Police Department here with us this evening. Would you like to come on up to the mic and say a few things?
So we have, this is Lieutenant Tolan, and then Detective Bershaw.
Detective Bershaw, I think, is a little bit shyer than I am. I will never miss an opportunity. I'll never miss an opportunity. My name is Jeff Tolan. I am the Bureau Commander of Operations for the Middletown Police Department, which is basically a fancy word expression for saying, "I'm one of the administrative lieutenants that works directly for Chief Awantu." So I would like to thank all of you, the members of the board, Mr. Delmore, Ms. Creedon, for allowing us the opportunity to come up here, but more importantly, for the opportunity to work with these guys. Tracy said a lot of great things at the beginning, when she started speaking, and I would just like to reiterate them. We have a fantastic partnership with the Middletown School District, and really, we have an excellent partnership specifically with Tracy. We've been working with her a lot over the last six months. For those of you who don't know, the administration kind of changed in the police department back in August. We had a new police chief, which actually changed the administrative lieutenants as well. One of Chief Awantu's primary missions was community policing, and building that relationship with the community, particularly the members of the youth. We have a good relationship with the school district. Actually, last year, we saddled Tracy and actually Mr. Connell and a lot of the other people with a coloring book project that our organization has a now-community-based coloring book that we brought to the school. Kevin actually went to Tracy and said, "Hey, we'd like to work with you on a project. We want to get a coloring book." Sometimes when you're dealing with people at the police department, they have young children that come in to report. Finally, he dragged himself up here.
Takes me a little bit.
So this community coloring book we did last year that we utilized for children who come into the police department, maybe they're the victims of the crime, maybe their parents are victims of crime, maybe they have to report something, and they need something to do while they're in the police department. So we make that coloring book available. This coloring book was customized for our community based on our design scheme for our police cars, incorporated different aspects specific to our police department, like our K-9 unit and things like that. It's been an excellent, excellent project. We use those coloring books not only for people who come to the police department, but also for people, community events, when we have big events like the Night Out Against Crime and other things. Back in the early part of the year, we had this Hummer. It's a 1986 Hummer. I was actually born in 1982, so it's four years younger than I am. I keep trying to talk the chief into making it my take-home vehicle, but he will not allow me to do that. So we wanted to design it. Obviously, it has a very militaristic look to it, and it could be a little bit menacing, and we're trying to soften that look. And we thought that we could have no better luck than by coming to the school district to design a vehicle with a more softened approach that can be used for us in community events. Once again, as soon as we came to Tracy, Tracy pointed us in the right direction, right to Norville. Norville kind of worked with Christine, and then Luis kind of jumped at the opportunity. I really give you a lot of credit, Luis. This is a huge undertaking and not something that a lot of people wanted to. There's a reason there was only one person who volunteered, because it's a big undertaking. I also really like his design schemes and his artwork. If I tried to draw stuff on the Hummer, I told him I'd probably be in stick figures and it wouldn't look very inviting to the community. So we couldn't be happier with the relationship that we have with the school district. Moving forward, obviously, we had the budget vote yesterday. The police department is anxiously awaiting the new school resource officer program. Being new in my position, I'm actually, I've had a lot of opportunities in the past six months to kind of meet a lot of the people from the schools. I was a patrol lieutenant, so I wasn't out in the community a lot, but now I look in the audience and I see a lot of faces that I know, and I'm glad that I have that relationship and that we can kind of improve that foundation that we've built upon. I know a lot of people and we can continue to work together to strengthen our schools. Our schools have amazing resources, and I've gotten a firsthand look over the past three or four months, coming through all the different schools. So I have to compliment the board, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. The work that you're doing is absolutely outstanding. So we really appreciate that, and we've noticed that so much more over the last six months. Before the chief yells at me for taking too much overtime, I'm going to get to my acknowledgement. Because of the great work that these guys did, the chief wanted to personally recognize the three people that were most instrumental in the program, as well as Tracy, because Tracy does such a great job. So I do have a certificate of commendation for First Louis. This is certified that Louis Escobar, on the 16th day of May 2018, has been awarded for the year 2018, which is hereby recognized and recorded in the department records, for your outstanding dedication and commitment to the collaborative project between the Middletown Police Department and the Middletown and Lower City School District in the artistic redesign of our Humvee utility vehicle. And a sign. Louis actually did tell me today, he was actually very interested in taking our police test upcoming. I told him, he's a little shy of age, but we would certainly welcome him in a couple of years. Maybe he has some aspirations to go into the military, which we would certainly love to see as well. But hopefully that works well, and I can't, again, thank you enough for your work. Additionally, Ms. Maraglia?
Yeah, I got it.
I have a tough last name as well. So for your guidance and support of the collaborative project between the City of Middletown and the Middletown and Lower City School District and the artistic design, we would like to recognize you.
Thank you.
And last and certainly not least, Mr. Connell. Thank you. I must say, our budgets are tight, just like your budgets, so hopefully we can continue to work with you guys together. It's been a great project for us, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Did anyone have questions for Louis?
I think, we'll go around. I think I saw Mr. Gomez's hand. Go ahead, Kevin.
We went straight to the police.
I just want to say to Mr. Escobar and all the wonderful individuals associated with this, Mr. Sorrentino, member of our Middletown Police Department, this is excellent. It's the right, it's the message we need to send out there, that our police department is there for us and working with partnership would make a great difference. It's true, it's community policing at its best, and I think it's great that we have that partnership at the high school with our police department, and I think it sends the right message and will also, I think, help further groom our young people to be future leaders of America, in addition to, at the same time, making sure that their safety and the safety of our wonderful staff is top priority. So thank you so much, wish you all the best.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Vince?
When are we going to see the vehicle?
Do you remember? When? Do you remember?
It's in the presentation, I believe.
Yeah, so the goal is to have it for the Night Out?
Against Crime.
Against Crime event. So it's in June. Currently, we're working with the auto body and sign to kind of make sure this work that we produce can fit to the vehicle's needs. But no matter what, it's going to be done by the end of, or the end of June, because funding is, has a tight deadline in July. So sometime before then. But you'll see it, like Detective or Lieutenant mentioned, it's going to be in many different community events. If you'd like to see it now, you can drive past the police department to get a better idea of like how large this vehicle is. And I just wanted to clarify, this piece that's been kind of displayed is going to be the entire back of the Hummer, so it's a very large piece. I think when we measured it out, it's about four feet by four feet, so it's going to have a great warming presence for the community, which I think Louis was very strategic on showing those interactions, but it's, I think he did a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Did you have a, Mr. Pierre?
I just want to say real quick, as a former police officer myself, I really appreciate you guys working with the community, working with the schools. It's very important for our students, the image that you guys project. And Louis, I really appreciate what you've done, and hopefully, one day you'll be a police officer like these gentlemen right here, to help protect this city. Great job. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions, Superintendent Delmore?
I'd just like to make a comment. I know that Lieutenant Tolan spoke very highly of the coloring book, and I know that Mr. Connell was instrumental in the graphic designs and the selection of that document. So happy that he selected Louis to work on the complicated pieces here to this Hummer, even though he wasn't in the photograph with Chief Awantu, but I understand they got elbowed out of the picture or something like that. But in all seriousness, I think the collaborative approach is really more authentic learning, if you will. If we're talking about what's going on in our classrooms and how does that transfer to beyond the stage, we keep talking about that and preparing our children for the next day after graduation. Here's a perfect example of something like this, in terms of the authenticity of what's going on in the classroom that could be transferred to more like practical issues. So thank you very much for the collaboration. Looking forward to more continuing efforts in this regard.
Thank you. And before we leave, we're going to take a group shot, but before we do that, I just want to continue with the theme of the cooperation with the Middletown Police Department or school system. In the past week and a half, we've had two graduations, two good-for-drugs graduation. Officer Beebe, I invited her here this evening. Unfortunately, she had another commitment. But the students, we had Carter and Maple Hill in the past week and a half, and the students go through a ten-week kind of rigorous program, and at the end, they receive certificates and they receive these T-shirts. So this is good, Middletown Police Department, if you can get that. And on the back, there are dates and so on. the police department and the citizenry, the community policing. So thank you so much for being here, and why don't we take a group photo? Can we do that, Kevin? Thank you.
No, no, you better come. You have a choice.
I want to compliment, I see a number of our administrators are here this evening. I want to compliment our administrative staff for being here. We're well-represented. And...
They feel as if I need moral support, so it's okay.
Greg, you go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Perino, good evening, Mr. Delmore, and Mrs. Creedon, and the Board of Education members. I am elated to be here this evening. I normally wouldn't be able to visit with you because on Thursday nights, we have pipers, and thankfully, you have a meeting on a Wednesday night, so I was able to be here and come talk to you about our recent trip and adventures. Forty-three Middletown High School students who are members of our music program traveled with me on April 25th through the 29th to go down to Walt Disney World. We had an amazing, tremendous five days where a good portion of it was spent traveling. We can deal with that, because when we got there, they performed better than I ever expected. There were 32 schools that were registered to be a part of Festival Disney this year. Of those 32, 16 of them were choral ensembles that were in our varied divisions, and I'm proud to say that my, for the groups that were there, they all came back with superior ratings, which, when you go, and I want to make sure you all understand, when you go to competition, there are varied levels. You can get a superior, you can get an excellent, you can get a good, you can get needs improvement, or basically, the bottom is basically telling you, "You should have stayed home." And thankfully, they let me know that they were more than pleased with what we came with our product and what we did for the time that we were there. I'm equally amazed by the fact that we took our 20, 21-hour bus ride, and within a matter of about three hours of arriving in Orlando, we went right directly to competition to go do what we needed to do and save the fun for afterwards, and that worked in our favor, because they really, it's just amazing to me that the 43 of them, they represent our entire vocal music program at the high school. They're not the entire program, and yet they can all stand up as the 43 to go represent our school and our school district and the program and perform as well as they do. It's humbling, and at the same time, I just have to give them all, which is why I'm glad a good number of the 43 are here, give them all amazing credit for the fact that they persevere and they work real hard during the course of the school year, they're fundraising all year round in order to pay for their trips, they're doing all of what they have to do, they're shoveling snow, they're babysitting, they're doing whatever it takes in order to have these experiences. And now that I'm in my 23rd year at Middletown High School, I have to say that it's amazing that I can take them out of the four walls of Middletown High School, take them out of the geography of Middletown, and take them elsewhere where they can go and experience something different, a place of difference, and yet be immersed in making music and being around people who are there to do exactly what they do. It's just really, it's, I'm hoping, you know, just, the hardware is phenomenal. It says superior, that's great, and they've been on display since we've come back. But the 43 of them, really, they deserve a lot of credit. And I know that we have amazing things that go on in the district, we have amazing sports, we have amazing academics, we have amazing musicians, and they really have risen to the occasion and have done just tremendously, and I'm very proud of every single one of them. I'm a lucky guy that I get to walk in every day and I have them in my midst. I'm a lucky guy that they work as hard as they do for themselves, for me, for all of us, so that our school music program really has the reputation that it has garnered, and they're really doing amazing things. I will say, as a side note, because I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I need to thank Mr. Test, my new colleague at Middletown High School, who came along with us for the ride. It was his first experience going as a chaperone and being a part of a school trip. his first experience going as a chaperone and being a part of a school trip. He learned a lot. He's so excited, because now he just has this eagerness about him about, I gotta do this now, I feel this vibe, I gotta be there. I have to thank Mrs. Quinones, I have to thank Mr. Raymond, I have to thank Mrs. Plasse, I have to thank Mrs. John, I have to thank, I gotta remember, and I'm gonna say one more, there's another name that I'm gonna be mad about that I, no, another chaperone that was with me, and I'm gonna, I'll get it, it'll come to me. But they gave up their time, they took personal time from work, they take personal time to be alongside of their children and to help me out side by side, and I really am very lucky that they were willing to do that as well. And also, on a side note, my former student, who's now a colleague of mine at Twin Towers, did me a huge favor, which I got all of them sorted to follow my lead. For Christmas, she and her family went to Disney World, and she came back and brought me a lanyard that had a starter set. And so I talked to these kids, I said, "We're gonna go to Disney World," and they have this program that I wasn't aware of, and we can go around and trade, and we can meet all the cast members, and we can just spend the whole time while we're there trading. I would say a good number of them all traded with me. We walked around, we met people, we approached them. We got some really nice pins to bring back and things that represent our different visits from the Walt Disney Magic Kingdom, the Epcot. Just really amazing, I do have to say. It's almost a month out now, but I have nothing but praise and nothing but positive things to say about the entire time that we were gone. So...
Of course, we want to thank you, Mr. Bennett. You always do a superlative job, and we want to thank all the students here tonight, all the musicians and so on. Thank you. We know it's not easy. You're spending extra time, you're putting that effort in, but it pays off in the end. So many thanks. And why don't we get a group photo? Can we do that?
Yeah, ask.
Just real quick, I see the awards, and I know you said they're all the top-level awards, but for what categories are they?
My chamber group came with me. Chamber Singers is my select mix group at the high school, and so they received a superior rating for their performance. The Women's Corral came with me, so there was a representative group of that ensemble that were there with me. They got a superior, and then Pipers came with me, which is obviously, and I do have to say, and this is another thing, the group that scored higher than us got a 98.9, and we received a 94.7. The nice thing for me to come back, and the nice thing for all of the members of Pipers to come back with is, for us as a measuring, as an evaluation, we still have room to grow, even though they're superior, and even though they got a 94.7, which is, that's tremendous. We still have, we have some things that we can actually do to raise the level of our game, and not to say that anybody's ever gonna be perfect, but I would like to get us a couple, three more points or so to get in there. I think that would be a tremendous thing. And the other thing too, which the judges were very complimentary about, we had a judge that was there who was a choral music educator in the United States of America, Dr. Rusephany Powell from Auburn University, who was one of the primary clinicians that was there and adjudicators. Everybody who is anybody in music education would welcome to have that woman come and spend some time, and she spent some time and gave us some valuable feedback. There was another one there from the Eastman School of Music up in Rochester, and another one from Emory University that was there. The three of them were there to greet us and work with us, and they really gave the students some valuable information and some useful things to work on and to come back to prepare for June 1st, which is when they'll be out on display at our spring concert. So the other thing is true, I have to, and I told them I would say something, our display has been out in the main office for about a month. Everybody's praised us, everybody congratulates me all the time. I gotta work in something into my planning where I can try to find us a secure visual, a place to put our trophies on display at Middletown High School. Because right now, when they leave the main office, they go back into my classroom, so I'm gonna make it my mission in life that I'm gonna find myself a space where we can put our hardware out on display, like the Erie Bell and like the other trophies that are in the athletic area, so that when people come to visit us, they can see it and appreciate it. So I'll make that my mission for coming up.
That's a good mission. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Why don't we take a photo now with your group and Mr. Delmore? Mr. Delmore and myself will take the photo. Next, next on the agenda, and because of the hour, we're going right into Opportunities to Address the Board. Remember, Opportunities to Address the Board, if you'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium, four minutes, and you sign your name, and while Mr. Warren, I think, wants, do you wanna come up? But I was gonna thank you anyway, Andy, for the forum, facilitating the forum, gathering the questions and so on. You did an excellent, really an excellent job there. First opportunity to address the board, any takers on that? Okay, thank you. Any letters? Next, we come to the Acceptance of the May 15, 2018 Vote Results. And Mr. Delmore, would you like to say anything on that? Or Mrs. Creedon? Okay.
You have to read the resolution, Mr. Perino.
You should have a highlight of the resolution for the board vote.
A motion to, yeah.
A motion, not a resolution.
Motion to accept the results, May 15. Second on that?
Motion to accept the results.
Okay, so if you look up on the, if you look up on the screen, there is a one-slide summary of last night's voting results for the 18-19 school budget, and you'll see that there is 432 yes votes and 157 no votes. So 73% of the voting public was in favor of the school district budget, which is really exciting to have that much buy-in on the 18-19 budget. Also summarized there for you is that Ms. Blumenau will maintain her seat, as well as Mr. Perino, who will maintain his seat, and Mr. Lassener, who joined us this evening for the first time, will be taking over the seat that's being vacated by Mrs. Knapp's retirement.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
I have a question. When does this become official? I notice it says unofficial. And what's the process to make it official?
Yes, you are. It becomes official after you vote.
Any other, any more questions on this? Any discussion? All in favor of accepting?
I'd like to say something. So I want to congratulate John and Paula for doing this again. You've done a great job for these last few years. I forgot how many years you have. And Paula, you've done a great job. John, I welcome you to come here. I think it's going to be good. There's a learning curve. There's a good year learning curve, and don't let anybody fool you when they say it's not. I remember they said to me, "Oh, just two meetings a month, that's all you have to do." I was like, "Oh, I can do two meetings a month." Little did I know. But I have to, I have to wonder, the numbers are so low, which, over my 15 years here, I've seen when the numbers were higher, when there was, as we call, drama, or there was controversy, or anything like that. But when you think about 600 people voting, that's really not very good. There was bad weather, though, so we have to take into account a little bit of that. But that's kind of sad in a way that you only have 600 people that came out to vote. But other than that, congratulations, guys. Thank you.
I have a comment also, Mr. Perino.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We give numerous opportunities for public input into the budget, and very rarely do we have anybody at the mic. I think we had two people this year. So my question is, there are, however, 157 people who voted no. We represent everybody, every single person in this, every citizen in the Middletown and Walk Hill community. We want to know your input. We want to know what it is about the budget, or the budget process, or whatever it is, that you didn't feel it was favorable enough to your needs to vote yes. So, but very respectfully, I'm saying this, please, that we really need to hear from you. And it's not too late now. I mean, you can come in at any time and express your feelings, because if there's something in there we can fix that could change your mind, that you would vote positively for the budget, we'll look at it. And that's what we're here for. It's not a rubber stamp. It takes months and months of preparation, and we're listening every step of the way. So that's my invitation. Come in and tell us what you need in this budget. Thank you.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Thank you. I was going to wait and make a comment, but I realized at this hour, I actually have to leave the meeting, unfortunately, so I didn't want to, I figured this was a good time to make a comment. I just wanted to say thank you to the community for supporting our school and everything that our school district and everything that we work hard for and we think about and we stay awake on and really put our heart and soul into making this district the best district that it can be. And it's always a work in progress, always a work in progress. We are continually trying to beat ourselves and go higher and aim higher. So I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to continue for that fight. And thank you to all the supporters who voted for me to stay here. And congratulations to my fellow board member, Mr. Perino, and to Mr. Lasseneri. It is, we've got, you know, extreme season on the board, and we have fresh new eyes, so it's a good place. I'm like right smack in the middle of that. And I feel that, I really do. And I feel that my perspective as a, that my perspective is here for consistency as well. So that's, and that's why I ran. So thank you again, and I think this is a good new start to the new year.
John, Lasseneri, would you like to say a couple words here?
A few, Mr. Perino. First off, congratulations to yourself and to Paula. I'm looking forward to working with not only the two of you, but the other members of this board, starting in July. Linda, we've known each other a very long time. You've been here 15 years, I believe, and I have some very big shoes to fill. I don't know how to thank the people that came out and supported me. I know, like Mr. Crisenzio was saying, we only had 600 people, less than, show up to actually put ballots in, and I know I knocked on at least twice that many doors. So, but I appreciate everything that everybody's done collectively with the support I've had from friends, family. My wife has tolerated my sleepless nights. But I appreciate everything everybody's done. So I'm just looking forward to July, when we can all collectively work together to continue to make this district move forward as it has. And, you know, I know, as you said, Linda, it is gonna be a learning curve. I've been told that by probably a dozen people now, and I'm just looking forward to that curve and learning from the best that we have here from all different backgrounds. Thank you.
Vice President Bishop Williams, you said you wanted to say a few words?
First, I do want to thank the community for coming out and voting. I stepped out for a moment to take a quick emergency phone call, but I came back in and I was at the end of Mrs. Knapp's comments. And I agree, I do agree completely, well, partially, I agree partially, that it's concerning that, you know, with less than 600 votes, it's concerning when you're in a community this big. But if I could flip it just for a second, and I said this a little bit earlier to the rest of the board members, to a certain degree, the times that we've had big turnouts have been times when there's been controversy. This district has been moving in a very positive direction, and fortunately, the controversy, any controversy has been held to a minimum. And so I'm choosing, no one else has to do it, but for me, I'm choosing the fact that there was a low turnout, although I would like to see greater engagement. I'm taking it, for this particular instance, as a badge of honor, that we did not have controversy, and that people did not feel the need to come out and fight against it. The 157 that voted against it, against the budget, I agree with Mr. Crisenzio. We'd love to hear what they have to say, what everyone has to say. I do understand we can't please everybody. There's no way in the world that you please everybody. But we do want to hear what everyone has to say, because at the end of the day, we're trying to make a cake, and if you take all the ingredients of a cake individually, they're not all good. You know, you don't, you take your eggs, your flour, no one eats those things individually, raw, by themselves, but you have to take them and put them together and mix it up, and put them in the oven in order to get cake. And so that's what we're trying to do. So we need to take the good with the bad and have everything work out for the best so that we can continue to move in a forward direction. We're not trying to go backwards. There's no retreat and no surrender in Middletown City School District. So we're gonna continue to move forward. But thank you, everybody. Congratulations, Mr. Perino. Congratulations, Mrs. Blumenau. Congratulations, Mr. Lassener, is it Lasseneri? Lasseneri? Lasseneri. Congratulations. So glad to have you here on the board. And I don't know what we're gonna do with three Johns sitting at the table. We're gonna have to be John 1, 2, and 3. But it's cool, because I just think John is a great name anyhow. So my mama named me John, so it's a good name. Welcome.
You know, I'm gonna, I just want to finish up with what Mr. Crisenzio said. On the budget, the budget starts in October with Mr. Tuttle meeting with administrators, and administrators meet with department heads, on and on. We get involved in the budget in December. Then we start each component, each section of the budget. The administrative, the instructional, capital, and benefits are discussed. We go through it line by line. It's presented to us, we get... We can ask any questions about it. The public has the right to come up and ask questions about the, any component of the budget. Remember, the, we have the opportunity to address, the public has the opportunity to address the board two times a, a month, and twice a meeting. And you know, it's a, it's, it's a meeting held in public. It's not a public meeting officially, a board meeting. We don't have to allow any opportunity to address the board at all, by law, but we do. So, that's one thing. And as Mr. Cosenzo said, it's good to get sometimes the rumors out, and it, it's good to do that. Just one example. Somebody said they weren't going to vote, they were going to vote against the budget because we were using the money for the field, and we're not addressing leaks in Monhagen Middle School. We always address any situation such as leaks, or, or whatever. We have a whole process to do this. We don't let those things go, folks. We will not let these things go. So, I'm just saying that. Please, if you have any questions, you can call any one of us up and ask, or you can come to the mic. So, let's, let's take the next step here. We've had discussion on this, and let's vote on this. Motion to accept the results? We did that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Onto personnel. Onto personnel memorandum. If there's no objection, I'd like to approve, I'd like a motion to approve 23B instructional, 23C non-instructional, 23D instructional, 23E non-instructional. May I have a motion to approve? A.
No, I object.
A is separate.
Okay, okay. A is separate.
All right, yeah. B, C, D, and E. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll go to A. Okay. Let's do that right, right now. Any discussion on A, Mr. Delmore? Do you want to say something here?
My pleasure to say something with great, with joy. On this agenda item A, of our personnel agenda, we see the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction recommending, recommended for this position, Amy Creedon. Amy Creedon has been a devout, and devoted, and dedicated employee of this school district for almost 17 years. She's held various positions in this district, from classroom teacher at Twin Towers, starting out, to a computer teacher in that same school, Twin Towers, then became a coordinator of technology, a coach of instructional technology, became an assistant principal at Maple Hill, was principal, promoted to principal of race to the top, and did a phenomenal job about that, as we become an exemplar for the federal government in terms of implementing the grant that was awarded by them, although, you know, designed and developed by us, but implemented beyond the scope of that work, to the point where we became a model for the nation in terms of other districts awarded, that were not doing as well in the implementation and the execution of their plans, to look at how well we were doing. Till this day, we still get calls from the federal government to help out, and, and if you will, mentor other school districts with their grant applications, and the execution thereof. At the same time, she was also principal at Maple Hill, running a school of almost 1,200 students on a daily basis. To do those two very important jobs to the level of excellence is nothing short of marvelous, and is with great pleasure that I bring to you tonight for your vote. Ms. Amy Creedon, hopefully you'll vote in a yes, and I think you will. There's no doubt not to, to vote her in as part of our instructional team, as we move forward, and continue to move forward to the next, the next year, looking forward to enhance our programs. Ms. Creedon? Want to say a few words? You want to vote first?
Let's vote.
All right, let's.
Let's vote first.
All right, I know you can't.
I don't want to.
That's all right.
We made the motion. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Just as Mr. Delmore said, just about 18 years ago, Middletown became my home, I started as a teacher at Twin Towers Middle School with Gordine as my fearless leader. I continue to be humbled to this day by the professionalism and excellence of those that I work alongside, many of them who are sitting here this evening. By far, Middletown has the most innovative, hardworking, student-serving school community I've ever been a part of. Everyone is working each and every day for our mission, which is every student, every day. I am so honored to have even been considered for this role by such an esteemed group of individuals. Although I am also very sad to be leaving the day-to-day interaction with the Lunds that I love so much, my family at Maple Hill, I'd like to take this moment to thank them for all that they've done to push me to be a better administrator, mother, wife, and friend. I truly value those years that I've spent at Maple Hill, under both Dominic's leadership, and then taking on the helm on my own, and will always remember them fondly. To Mrs. Driscoll, I'm not really quite sure what to say, to sum up my gratitude for you to taking over leadership there, while I took this leap to join this team here. You truly bring to light the mantra of better together. To Mr. Delmore and the Board of Education, I will continue to work each and every day to serve this district in my new role with energy and excitement, and I am eternally grateful for the support that you've shown me this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations from all of us. I know you, you have done an excellent job, and you will continue to do a very supportive job. Thank you. Nice, nice administrative team we have here, central administrative team. Let's go on to the financial memorandum. Motion to approve Financial Memorandum Number 25 as presented. We'll give you a few minutes to leave, if you want. We, we're not going to be offended. Is it something that Amy said? You have all that planning to do for tomorrow, so go, go ahead. We know that.
Safe, safe hip-hom, everyone.
Motion to approve Financial Memorandum Number 25 as presented? Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? And again, as, as you know, people sitting around this table know, and Mr. Warren and the audience knows that, we have the, we have the financial backup, we have the financial memorandum, we have the supportive documents at least a week before, and we can ask any questions on those, on the, the financial memorandum. So, again, we're transparent here, we're, we're open, and so on. So, let's see, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
We have a second on that? Yes, we did, looking at Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Special Service Memorandum Number 22. Motion to approve Special Service Memorandum Number 22 as presented? So moved. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. For the people who don't know, it's basically the Special Service Memorandum, the approval of the IEPs, which are, are not discussed in, in public, the individual education plans. Approval of the board action items, approval of the Board of Education meeting dates, 2018, 2019. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve, approve of the, the first and second, to waive the first and second reading, and approve policy 7222. So moved. Any discussion on this? This has gone to Erie Bosse. We have, we have discussed this?
Yes, we have.
In detail? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the shortened workday resolution. Now, I'm going to have to read this, in large city school district of Middletown, shortened workday on May 25, 2018. Whereas a superintendent of schools, quote superintendent, seeks the approval of the Board of Education to permit unionized and non-unionized employees of the district to work a shortened workday on May 25, 2018, whereas a superintendent seeks the approval on a one-time, non precedent-setting basis as a result of the change to the district's pupil instructional calendar for the 2017-2018 school year, whereas a number of shortened workday hours on May 25, 2018 will be determined at the superintendent's discretion, thereby ensuring that all students and district needs have been met. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education approves the superintendent to make May 25, 2018, a shortened workday for district employees as described above, subject to the consent of the unions that represent such employees. See, I think we had, we had the motion, and we had a second on this. Any further discussion on this? And we did discuss this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second opportunity to address the board. Any takers? I don't see any, so going once, twice. Gone. Any, any committee reports this evening? Mr. Gomez, your Fair Funding Committee?
Yes, the Fair Funding Committees. Fair Funding Committees will full swing. We've been, we had a wonderful presentation at the last meeting by Mr. Tuttle with respect to the different unfunded mandates. What we're doing right now is looking at, going item by item, seeing what are their different costs, and to have a sense of which of these unfunded mandates, hopefully or ideally, we could do away with. Or hopefully work with the, with the powers that may be to be a voice to encourage them to do away with, and give some relief to our districts.
Unfortunately, we seem to be losing, Mr. Bonisak?
I was going to comment on that, the other part, yeah. Yeah, the last.
Comment now.
Okay, yeah. During the last few weeks, we've, we heard that we're losing two of our longtime veteran legislators for Orange County, State Senator William Larkin and State Senator John Bonisak, who represents our district. And there are a lot of issues at stake in the coming election, everything from a permanent funding for school security, addressing unfunded mandates, also making sure that we have support for other initiatives our district has taken, such as going on our own when it comes to funding the health cost of our staff. And nonetheless, we look forward that whoever prevails in the upcoming November elections, and both districts will be able to be partners we could work with. And we're thankful to our current legislators for their years of service, and that we hope to be able to build on always stronger relations as we move forward with their eventual successors.
Thank you again, Mr. Gomez, for the, the work you've done. Any other committee reports? And on that committee, another board member sits on that Fair Funding Committee, Mrs. Zucks, contributes greatly to that committee. Now, I think we come to the second opportunity to.
No, we didn't.
No, what do we have here now? Roundtable. Any new and compelling?
No, but can we back up a second?
Go ahead.
I know that we approved, under action items, the Board of Education meeting dates for 2018, 2019. I'm going to ask you to take a look at them again, because I think the Thursday in March is during Easter Passover break. I believe it's March.
Thought that was in, I thought that was in April. I, I thought that was in April.
Am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong. I had March 21st. Am I wrong there?
Doing that right now.
Maybe I'm wrong.
The calendar for 2018-19, Mrs. Tobias, and we have spring break, April 15 through the 22nd of April. Are you looking at the 18-19? I, I think you're looking at 17-18.
No, you know what I looked at? I looked at March, but the April was cut off.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it to your attention before.
Thank you for keeping a close eye on it.
No problem.
Thank you for being a watchdog.
Well, wait a second, though. All right, I'll, I'll check it out, because I had, that's the problem. I had April 25th as a Board of Education meeting. Is that correct?
No, we're fine. We're back, we're back in session.
So, you're going the 19th? Okay. See, I have the Board of Ed, that's why I'm looking, I'm looking at Easter Sunday, and I'm saying, I think there's something wrong here. Sorry, folks. That happens when you get a little older.
Is that on that little calendar you have?
Yes, it is, sir. It's not correct.
She needs a bigger one with bigger numbers.
No, I just need them to be in the right situation. I have enough problems with that.
Anything, anything else new and compelling, Mr. Cosenzo?
The Academic Achievement Awards Dinner last week. That was incredible. We have a young man going to West Point. The, it was just so well done. The food was excellent, the ambiance was excellent, the way the, the program ran, it was so efficient. It was really a good night. And to see all those students there, and their families were there, and everybody's clapping, it was incredible. I don't know how many received awards, but there were quite a few, and quite a few nice scholarships.
I think I heard there was something like $450,000 of scholarships and so on.
That's a testament to the faculty and staff, and the parents, and the hard works of the kids.
Just shows of the quality of the students we have in this district, and the quality of the administrative and instructional and support staff.
Absolutely.
Any, anything else new and compelling?
Yeah, I'm back again. This time, I have all the information correct, Mr. Perino. This past weekend, Monhagen Middle School put on their drama club production, and under recognitions and announcements, I, I didn't mention it. I understand from Mr. Adonia that Mr. Thomas, this was his first year directing, those kids did one amazing job with the whiz. Again, I'm sorry that there wasn't more in attendance, but it was absolutely. Again, I'm sorry that there wasn't more in attendance, but it was absolutely phenomenal to see the talent of, and these children are what, 11, 12, 13 years old?
Yes.
So kudos to the entire production staff and to all those who worked to make this a very successful event.
And I think we, we had a formal letter sent to Mr. Thomas by Mrs. Clark, signed by myself and other members of the, other members of the, not only cast, but the directors. Thank you. Anything else?
I'd just like to, if I may, Mr. Perino, say a few things to the community regarding their unwavering support of this school district, not only financially in last night's budget vote, but also emotionally and psychologically in their participation and collaboration. As you mentioned just a minute ago, Mrs. Tobias, and these events certainly are key developing by our staff. There's no question about that. But it would be remiss on our part not to recognize the adults, the volunteers that are behind the scene that make that so possible as well. And to that end, it is important to note that we are physically responsible for every, every, every dollar that comes into this district, whether it's from taxpayer, it's pocketbook, wallet, or from the state government, which if you think about it, where do they get the money from? They get the money from us when we pay our taxes. So in essence, even though it may have an indirect venue, all of that money's coming from hard-working individuals. And these programs that are for our children are not only engaging, but are also preparing them for future, whatever they choose to move on beyond the confines of our school district. These could only be possible. You've heard Mr. Bennett talk about the, the music program. We've been recognized over the last couple of weekends about that. Our athletic programs, state championships are here because of this facilities that we have here. And also how our staff, especially the building and grounds and our athletic staff, support and welcome and embrace all of these programs. These don't happen by happenstance. It is a collaborative effort, not only about the, yes, less than 600 people came out this year to vote on the budget, very similar to last year, it was about 612 voters last year. And we would like to, as has been articulated, I'm not going to take more time about it, but I do think it's important to really thank everyone for their efforts to make it all possible so we can continue to grow and grow and grow and meet the challenges which we are not even aware of that are around the corner. But we are prepared, our facilities, our instruction programs that are wide encompassing the different levels of students' abilities as well as their interests. I welcome everyone to read the note I put up on the website early this afternoon. I think I take enough time, I took enough time out this time to mention all of that. But I think it's important that we realize that this district is moving forward with a very, very, very collaborative effort with the Board of Education and the community who takes their responsibility. And I want to thank all of you because sometimes we don't get the recognition for your efforts. And I want to be, on behalf of all of those parents that were unable to make it to the voting booths last night, I want to thank you very much for your volunteerism because without your support and understanding of the complexities of the school district of this size and the budget that you manage, I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Delmore, for those comments, and I'm sure we could all echo those comments. You mentioned the facilities in the district and there's sort of a, a bit of a misunderstanding. We don't maintain the facilities primarily because they bring economic benefit to the community. We maintain these facilities for our students. Physical education classes use these facilities. The teams use these facilities. Many of the teams use these facilities, not only the football team, the soccer teams, lacrosse, and so on. It's a nice side benefit that they bring economic benefits to the community, but that's why we keep it up as you keep your house up. You don't let your house go down. We don't let any of our facilities go down. So thank you very much for those comments. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you oppose, Mr. Gomez?
Oh, no, no.
All right. Motion adjourned.
We could do a roll call of both.